We have nine four minutes. What? We have nine quarters of what? We have nine quarters of what? We have nine quarters of what? We have to please give ordinance twenty two seven four thirty five.
I personally have a problem with basically making decisions here. I both have a question of problems with it right now, but of course, if we can amend this ordinance, as I make estimations in a year, I would go for it, but if we won't get there, then nobody can.
Thank you.
I think when Mr. Breton, particularly the idea was to catch up from where it was, just when Mr. John Breton come home, it hasn't been raised over, over ten years, or said any more than that possibly. Anyway, so that hasn't been, but meantime, all the expenses have increased on it as far as utilities, everything the city has paid direct, the insurance liability, everything that's assumed with that, and it hasn't been touched in a year. So, I personally am affected. I personally would like to see it raised, and I think Mr. Pearson wanted to put this together so that it wouldn't be a waning to those tenants, and it was raised gradually over a four year period, and then the CPI increase happened the fifth year. So that, again, like everything else, we've tried to do that we wouldn't have to touch it or keep up with the expenses. So, I'm in favor of the step increases, concerned that if we don't do that, then it'll be neglected again for another ten years. I'd love to be proactive in addressing it, and we're going to set it and have expectations of what we're going to do in the future. I understand some of what you're saying, Bob, but I'm not distinct, not being raised in ten years. I just think it's, and it's not their fault, but they have to, have to address it, and I just think the scale system will be.
For the city. Bob?
Oh, I guess I go back to the, basically, first moved in here, and everyone was just set in. We had people that would move in, two months, they'd move out. I mean, we had that on all of them. Matter of fact, I even gave one of them to the senior citizens to play cards in, and I think that one was up to the police department.
Yeah, we, we took one of them and expanded the police department and closed it off.
But I just, you know, I can see a raise now because it probably does need it, but I don't, I don't look at those units as being a moneymaker for the city. I look at it as providing a service as such to, if you want insurance, you walk in, get insurance, you'd be with us. I think I broke his lease twenty some years ago, and, you know, you got Moleford in the front. People probably stay, but then, like the front of some, it's, it's a country that does loans for people or something, and I think the rest of the state, I think we've been at a higher rate anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think they're listening along with this.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they, they pay more, and I.
I agree, yeah.
And they did a great job. I mean, we there, two, three, four times a week, food was excellent, it was so fun. But I don't know, I just think, I would hate to lose, like, the insurance guy. They, he's established, he's been there years and years and years, and Moleford, not the hill state, but then, it's like, I think we've had a, a, oh, a place where you can go, and they can reserve trips for you, and that middle one, it's about, like I say, I just, I don't, just don't look at it as something the city's trying to make money on, and I don't know how, how we got to the, I guess it probably is square footage and figure out how much in the overall picture it is.
Chris, do you know if the internet's provided key?
Um, I'd say that they have Wi-Fi service, but I would also say that most of them have their own internet provider.
What services are provided for?
Um, heat, electricity, water, uh, I think that they use the cleaning supplies and, uh, yes, vapors.
I agree with you. If they want to, they can use the Wi-Fi, right?
Common restroom facility.
Right, but there are not very many places that you're going to find that offer the utilities included at, at that price, that's just my opinion. You go out and try to lease an office space and go and see what extra is your paying. It's all included in this, and.
It's over a hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah. The thing I, the thing I don't like the most about it is how it's always, it's always been, I think one of the initial things that Mr. Pearson did was said, how much do these people pay per square foot, and there was never a clear answer. There was a, it was a, well, this, this group pays this much, and this group pays this much because this, this one was negotiated by this mayor, and this one was negotiated by this mayor. And so, I think.
Let's say, because I could do it on my own, but it's very difficult if it's on an individual basis.
And so, I think, I, one of the attempts of this legislation was to make sure everyone paid the same dollar per square foot, and that's what I like about it. I hear what you're saying, Bob, and I, I don't think that it's cost prohibitive. I think Mr. Davis, in the last time that we talked about, was here, and he said, man, that's the cheapest, that's the cheapest square footage you can get anywhere in the city for office space. I distinctly remember him saying that to Mr. Pearson, and I don't recall whether it was in, in public or whether it was in the public utilities, but we were discussing that. So, I, I hear you, um, but I like the fact that it makes everything new. Any other discussion?
I think one other advantage to that is, we have a couple of the spaces right now that aren't utilized with regular hours, and I think that's because the rent is, is so low. So, I think there's a positive impact that can have by people returning on their investments more and actually utilizing the space that, that they're afforded. And so, I, I think it could be not only a benefit just to get things more to a fair market value, but also to see the space being utilized, all of the spaces being utilized during business hours, rather than having, you know, hey, walking in and seeing some of the gates closed quite frequently. And, um, I think this would incentivize people that, hey, if we're investing to be there, then we, then we're going to actually be there and open for business in the city center too.
Mayor?
Um, mayor, do you know if there are any government or quasi-government entities that are looking at hiring, when I think of the, the parole office being down there, to me, that seems like a great fit being in a government building.
And we told them to wait until the twenty eighth when this was going on, because they're begging for it. They have to do it for their budget. They actually need the updated amount that they're going to be paying, so I was just going to see if this rolled through first, um, but I know that upstairs, playing that out has to be with certain groups looking for space.
I thought that might be a good fit for now.
Could, will this include that? Well, because I'm, I mean, we've talked about this upstairs forever. So, can we amend this? That's a question for the sister, but can we amend this and adopt the square footage for the upstairs too, based off of?
I mean, it'd be more desirable, probably, if someone had that ground floor versus tucked away.
So, we just, say one situation, but you've got a blueprint for it right here. Are, are they good? Are they wanting to stay?
Yeah, they just want their lease.
Gotcha. Make a motion to adopt ordinance, um, twenty-three seventy-four.
Nate?
Second. Roll call.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Luke.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Ordinance twenty-three seventy-four passes, or is adopted. Sam, that'll also take thirty days. You got five votes, it takes thirty days.
Correct. So, that's what they'll get is a lease that says at this date.
Yes.
February first, Brent.
Yep.
To be February.
January twenty-eighth, yeah, yeah. Moving on to resolutions, if the clerk, please give resolution twenty-three eighty-one reading by title online.
Establishing salaries for non-union employees in the planning emergency.
Nate?
Making motion to amend resolution twenty-three eighty-one versus water filtration in state water superintendent.
Harry, I'll second that. The amended version is also given favorable recommendation in finance. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Uh, could the clerk, please give amended resolution twenty-three eighty-one reading by title?
Establishing salaries for non-union employees in planning emergency.
Nate?
Like a motion to pass amended resolution twenty-three eighty-one.
Bob? Just one comment, I ask, um, tell me about if the council members who are non-union employees, for, they said, we are on there, lots work, we got fourteen dollar rates on the month, you probably got a hundred dollars if you're the chairman, but, um, that's all.
Yeah, we, that legislation almost passed four years ago, though, right? So, and that was to keep up with the, um.
Service credits.
Service credits, yes, to incentivize people to run, and it worked because people are interested in city government, and, um, I, that was, uh, that was patterned after Kevin Waldo's incentiv, incentivizing people to run by increasing it, and, um, so that was done four years ago.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. Mr. Perry?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Larry.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Amended resolution twenty-three eighty-one passes. If the clerk, please give resolution twenty-three eighty-three reading by title online.
Resolution in support of the Ohio legislature adopting this legislation permitting municipalities to share marijuana tax revenues and planning emergencies.
Bob?
Let's pass resolution twenty-three eighty-three.
Nate?
Discussion?
Yes.
I also like to note in section two that, uh, question to clerk, um, send this resolution if passed to Speaker Jason Stevens, State Senator Shane Wilkin, Representative Jeff LaRae, and State Senator Michael Ruley, uh, okay, we're sending that certified mail if passed, and I'll second.
Thank you. Do you have a discussion, Mary?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Nate, thanks for putting that together. Uh, resolution twenty-three eighty-three passes and will be sent certified mail to our representatives at the Ohio legislature. If the clerk, could please give resolution twenty-three eighty-four reading by title online.
Authorizing the vice mayor, Craig Harvey, to be named as a signatory on all accounts at all financial institutions on behalf of the city, where I can staple a file declaring emergency.
Bob?
This was given a favorable recommendation by the finance committee. I make the motion that we pass resolution twenty-three eighty-four.
Mr. Haney was waving his hand as he said, a signatory?
I'm saying that.
No, thank you. I'll abstain since my name's on the legislation. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-three eighty-four.
That means you're the signatory for thirty more days now.
Don't tell me that, I hope you know. Uh. If the clerk, could please give resolution twenty-three eighty-five reading by title?
To approve then and now certificates in excess of three thousand dollars to people's bank.
Bob?
Yeah, I want to make a motion that, uh, John said that we had issues with the date. Is that right, John?
Yes.
When the, the stuff was sent to somebody else, and you had to track them down, but all the numbers are good, and you've talked with the state or whoever.
Uh, yes, the numbers are good. There is a then and now certificate, that if there is something that is thirty days old that, and it's in excess of three thousand dollars, that we have to get permission from council to pay that. And there were two items, one of them we never saw, but it appeared on a December statement that was dated in November. The other one was for stuff on the riverfronts that was delivered to a non-employee on Center Street, and we were like, we just were lucky to even find that. And may I say one other thing, please? Um, this, this isn't a then and now in to people's bank that it says on the front. The description is correct, I believe, on the then and now certificate. Well, no, it's not, it's not up here either. Um, so, that should actually not say to people's bank, but it should say to Britain and premier pre-cast. And I just noted, noticed that as you read it.
Nate?
I'll make a motion to amend resolution twenty-three eighty-five to remove two people's bank on resolution title.
Chris?
Hey.
I'd second that, but do we need to include both companies, so, in the title?
Yes.
In the title, okay.
And declare an emergency.
Okay, I'll make a motion to change the title, two people's bank to written incorporated and premier pre-cast and declare emergency.
Sir. Hey. We have a motion to amend resolution twenty-three eighty-five, second, roll call.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
If the clerk, could please give amended resolution twenty-three eighty-five reading by title? With the, um, two.
Oh, I see what you're saying. To approve then and now certificates in excess of three thousand dollars to Britain, Haney, and Pre-Cast.
Pre-Cast.
Pre-Cast, and declaring emergency.
Nate?
Make a motion to pass amend resolution twenty-three eighty-five.
Hey.
Sir.
Roll call.
Brown.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Juan.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Amended resolution twenty-three eighty-five passes. Moving on to miscellaneous, uh, two things really quick. Um, mayor, if you could set up a planning commission meeting, uh, in the next couple of weeks.
I'd love to have a vice mayor.
I don't care to do it.
Call that meeting.
I don't care to do it, um, I'm the last here to do it, um, because I have the contact to have your agency. Um, if possible, next Thursday, January fourth, five o'clock here somewhere, maybe here in council chambers, we'll be fine. If, if, um, if all the, if all those members can attend, we have some time, so, like, we can figure out a date when we're all available, but if we could do it then and get it over with, January fourth, five o'clock, planning commission, um, also.
Tools are late on that, sorry.
January fourth, next Thursday, five o'clock here, council chambers, planning commission regarding ordinance twenty-three eighty-two zoning on marijuana business growing facilities and dispensaries. Also, on the same note, Mr. Schaefer, um, we are required to give thirty days prior notice about a public hearing on this. about a public hearing on this ordinance twenty-three eighty-two. Uh, the ordinance is about prohibiting marijuana business growing facilities and dispensaries for other than personal use in residential areas. Um, they are still allowed in business and commercial and industrial areas, just not residential areas other than for personal use. And I'd like to schedule that public hearing for February eighth at five fifteen. That precedes our first February meeting at five fifteen, so Mr. Finance Chairman, Public Utilities Chairman, um, will have to make sure that, I, I put that early enough that if we have other business, we can do that prior to, okay?
Is that just a regular public hearing?
Public hearing regarding ordinance twenty-three eighty-two.
Agreed, alright. I will get that in my story and...
Thank you, sir. Um, the next meeting, January eleventh, will have, um, second reading of that ordinance. And then if we could table it, to take it off the table, um, on February the eighth, with no running. That's a lot happening with miscellaneous, Mr. Hany?
Uh, do we have a date for the quarterly, not day?
No, not yet.
When, when was last?
We're planning on having actually like a, we're working this with, to get our dumpster cost down to come up significantly. So we're trying to schedule the whole entire year out, all to the time that way. Because we've been keeping dumpsters on hand too. So we're trying to renegotiate right now, so we're looking to actually set those dates for the entire year at once, so...
Uh, one more thing while we're on dumpsters. John, how are we looking on court fours?
We did really well last year getting there and cleaning that up. And we have been tied up with our software conversion this year in sicknesses in the office. So hopefully, you know, this is a time for us to get up there and start going through it because it's not two hundred degrees.
Right.
So I plan on getting people up there again. We've had an employee replaced, we've had sickness and software, so it, it is not on the back burner. It's just that the stove hadn't been on.
Got you. Thank you. Mr. Juan.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, file, and make part of amendments, the November twenty, twenty-three financials.
Mr. Perry.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Juan. One more thing, I just kind of want to take a second, uh, reflect back on twenty-twenty-three. I like to do this at the end of every year. I think we have a lot of great things happening in our city. Uh, I think a lot of great things happened in twenty-twenty-three as far as the paving projects, the new city garage, uh, the refurbishment of the park on A Street, um, the infrastructure project in, in Green Valley. Got a lot of great things happening, I think, in twenty-twenty-four. Again, we're gonna have s- some great things also, uh, I'm really looking forward to it. And I want to say thank you to all the council and, uh, Mayor, Mr. Reelum for all of your hard work in twenty-twenty-three. And I'm looking forward to twenty-twenty-four.
That's it. Bob.
I'll show, adopt the, uh, financials.
Do you have something?
Yeah, we're at the end.
We're at the end.
Did you adopt the financials?
Yes. Yeah.
Alright, I need like a brief executive session pending litigation. Three minutes, I'm gonna brief you.
Do we need to call the solicitors?
No, never worry.
Okay.
Counsel and...
Mr. Reelum, uh, Terry as well.
Chris.
Make a motion to enter executive session.
Oh, wait. No, I, it's my fault. I said Chris. Mr. Hany.
Make a motion to enter executive sense, uh, executive session with counsel, uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor, Secretary Terry, and, uh, Finance Director John Purvis.
Litigation.
Purvis for litigation.
No action to follow?
No action to follow.
Nate.
I'll second.
Bob, you got the timer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I honestly want out quicker than you do. Just don't ask me any questions.
Alright, you got it.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Harry.
Thank y'all for joining us this evening. Mr. Schaefer, do you have any questions for, she's got a pack up. Yeah, you got everything you need?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you.